Okay, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council for Monday, June 6, 2022. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yedam Scalotti.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. Thank you so much. We met in closed session prior to this meeting. I'll ask the city attorney, if there's anything to report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council. We had two closed session matters that were addressed. The first one, there's no reportable action. The second one that was listed, there was a unanimous motive of four council members, Councilmember Hill abstaining to initiate litigation. And that's the extent of my report from closed session. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As is the custom, I always like to make a few comments before we roll into the agenda. And so, welcome. We are in a hybrid format, so you, we are in person, and of course, people are watching on Zoom. And later on, we'll talk about how people can call in. Always give a shout out to our incredible staff. They work tirelessly, both in front of the scenes and behind the scene to make sure that our city runs so beautifully. And we are very indebted to them. In fact, we had an employee recognition. I don't know if the city manager will be speaking to that. We had an event a couple weeks ago to recognize all of those individuals. It has been three weeks since our last council meeting, and I know we'll have a lot of report outs from my colleagues when we get to that portion, but I do want to pause and take a moment to recognize the ongoing gun violence that continues to plague plague our society. And it's devastating for those who are both immediately impacted. And it creates, I would say, ripples of sadness and despair for us all. We had a Marin County gun buyback event on Saturday, and I will talk about that when we get to the council member reports. But suffice to say, we had a great turnout, and people have been very impacted by these national news. Also, on tonight's agenda, we have proclamations around Juneteenth, Juneteenth, and LGBTQ plus Pride Month, so we look forward to that. And we don't have a proclamation, but we for sure want to give a shout out to all the school graduates. It's the month of June, which means drive careful, carefully out there because there are going to be more students out there. But we recognize the accomplishment for all the graduates, and we wish them the best in their next chapter. And finally, we like to include a land acknowledgement. Present day, San Rafael is located in the traditional lands of the coastal Miwok people. We recognize this history as well as those who still reside here. So we have a fantastic meeting as always. Thank you for tuning in, and I will, it's deputy city clerk or the city clerk that will talk about how you can participate in this evening for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. The meeting tonight is being recorded, and it's being streamed live to YouTube. And anyone who is unable to make it to the council chambers can still provide public comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128, and use the meeting ID 817-3692-0337 pound, or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you're commenting over the telephone, you'll need to press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. And if you're commenting through Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and let us know that you'd like to speak, and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience any technical difficulties at all, you're welcome to email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefal.org. And for those of you who are attending in person and wish to provide public comment, you can approach the podium once Mayor Kate opens the public comment period, and display it on the podium and the projector as a two minute timer to help you stay within the two minute timeframe. And for public comments not related to this evening's agenda, you could fill out a public comment card found on the lobby table and right here, and then submit them to me. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and let us know what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So open time for public expression, and as she just described, we'll start in person. And I have a card from Paul Coleman. If you'd like to come down and share your thoughts?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. I am, my name is Paul Coleman, and I'm a resident and homeowner, and association board member at Baypoint Lagoons in San Rafael. I'm the landscape committee chair, and, and am working with the, with our lagoons committee. Recently, we formed a working group of lagoons committee and landscape committee members, as well as homeowners, to address the persistent deterioration of the lagoon shoreline known as the upper and lower buffer zones. These, these zones are currently planted with original and replacement plantings following a city-approved best practices list for, for, for bay, for bay wetlands at the time. Since then, or the original plantings, many are dead, dying and present a fire hazard. Many of the original, the species that were approved for this type of use now kind of become recognized as, as, as being somewhat of a fire hazard. And, and we do have adjacent homes to, to, to the buffer zones. Additionally, our irrigation system in this area has been thoroughly destroyed by wildlife. So our, so our working group has been formed to say, look, we need to look forward towards a non-irrigation, as that's really being phased out in, in common areas and in public spaces, as well as let's look at a more, a more wildlife resisted, resistive plant scape for this area. And we've got to acknowledge that new reality of wildlife mitigate, wildfire mitigation, minimum irrigation, wildlife habitat enhancement, which is part of the requirements of the, the assessment district, and of course, wetland beauty, which it is, it's a beautiful lagoon, if you ever get a chance to come out and see our area. So in any case, our, our lagoon is shared by both Spinnaker Point and Baypoint Lagoons Association, but the assessment district that is fun, is that is where most funds come from, if not all funds come from, for the maintenance of, of the lagoon.
Mr. Coleman, I'm sorry, may I interrupt? Do you, you can also give public comment around the assessment because you have your two minutes are up now, but we're going to be talking about the assessment piece. So if you would hold that piece until we start talking about the assessment?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So thank you about the landscape part. And I have your card. So what I'll do is pass it to the city manager, and we'll either have the appropriate DPW or FIRE to help consult on what you brought up.
Good deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could clarify where that's at on the agenda and ask
Oh, yes.
Public Works Director Bill Guerin to give me a head nod if I have this right. The Baypoint Lagoons Assessment District, we have on the consent calendar to set the public hearing for July 5. So we're actually be coming back on this very topic through a public hearing format on July 5. And that, that part is, is on the consent calendar tonight. So the public speaker can certainly speak under the, under the consent calendar.
We'll give you a head nod at that part.
Is that right, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we'll make sure that you come back up and write myself a note. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers like to address on, address the council on any item not on the agenda? Not seen any, we will see if there are any virtual comments.
Now would be the time, if you're calling in by telephone, to press star nine, or if you're on Zoom, you would need to use the raise hand feature. I see no hands raised at the moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the city manager's report. So with that, city manager Shuts.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council. I have three announcements tonight. The first one is that this year, the council has started a new practice of having district community conversations and joint community conversations, which are citywide. And those have been going on throughout the year. I'm just bringing it up because the next one is this week. It's one of the citywide community conversations. It's June 8 on Wednesday at 5:30 PM at the San Rafael Community Center on, on B Street with Mayor Kate. So that's kind of the next opportunity that we have, one of those. And then we'll be coming back again later this year with all of the ones that are taking place at the, at the district level as well. As the council knows, these are, some of them are virtual. We're trying to create different types of opportunities for people to weigh in. So some of them are virtual, and some of them are in person, even neighborhood cleanups or ice cream socials or that sort of thing. So this particular one that's coming up is an in-person one on, on June 8, Wednesday of this week at 5:30 PM. Also, just wanted to mention quickly that the Small Business Development Center with the, you hear the acronym SBDC has announced $2,500 COVID relief grants for businesses in Marin that made less than $50,000 in 2019. So we saw a lot of grants and loans programmed after COVID, and there hasn't been as much lately on, on this. So I just wanted to call this out. Businesses located in Marin County, been in business since December 2019, with less than $50,000 in gross revenue, can contact the Small Business Development Center, MarinSBDC.org, to find out how to apply. The applications there are open through this entire month for those $2,500 COVID relief grants. The next item is that, as the council knows, the eviction moratorium that's been in place is set to expire at the end of this month. And Marin County is looking at whether they would be willing, the Board of Supervisors desires to extend that eviction moratorium. And they are likely to focus just on the unincorporated areas. So city staff has been preparing a draft eviction moratorium for this council's consideration, and any other city in town in Marin that wanted to extend it within their jurisdiction would have to go separately. So we're doing the homework, the background work right now to bring this to you. By coincidence, the same day that the county Board of Supervisors is hearing it, they'll hear it on June 21 during the day. And then our next city council meeting happens to be June 21 in the evening. So we'll bring that forward to you at that time, and the council will be able to hear public input and determine if you want to do an, an extension to the moratorium that's been in place around evictions. The, it's still early in June, so the staff reports and recommendations haven't been written yet, but a conversation is taking place about extending it through September of this year with an attempt to coincide with the emergency rental assistance funds being distributed. So I'd expect to see that on your next city council agenda. And then just very briefly, because the mayor brought it up, we did have our employee recognition event, an annual event. And it's a fantastic event to be able to honor certain things in our workforce, all of the employees and the great work that they, they do all the time. And then we have some special awards that focus on innovation, on social responsibility. So things that are people, not necessarily that they're doing even through their day to day jobs, but how they're giving back to the community in other ways. And one that we call the Dean Allison Award, named after our former Public Works Director, that has to do more with kind of the principles of how we do our work and how we work with the community and find solutions with the community. So those three, in addition to kind of service milestone awards, and we did have employees that had worked for the city for 30, 35, and even 40 years that we honored at that event. So it's a really nice event. I appreciate bringing it up. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will take public comment after the council members report out. So I'll turn to the vice mayor, Rachel.
Thank you. It's been a busy three weeks. So attended a number of meetings of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and thanks to Chief Wyatt and to Quinn and the work that's been happening there, that the budget has now been approved, and work is going forward. So we'll be providing more information about which projects and items soon about, but those are available online, as well as the recordings of those meetings. Attended the San Rafael Employee Recognition Lunch, which is fun. There was a homeless forum that on May 23, and it was a group of cities, county, all the providers. And we were had an opportunity, there were about 200 people who attended. And we had an opportunity to hear from Sam Sembaris, who really provides the background around housing first, but it was also a really unique opportunity for all of us to share ideas and speak together about what's happening today. I attended a Tara Linda High School site meeting. They're getting close on their project in terms of completing the competition gym, but it also ties into work that's happening on Nova Albion and new safe, safe routes to schools, as well as, so traffic slowdown protocols. Attended the Chamber of Commerce State of the City Dinner, which, thank you, Mayor Kate, did an amazing job emceeing. I met, had an opportunity to meet with the mayor of Maderia. This is a mayor from the Yucatan Peninsula in, for Guatemala, and it was a very interesting, I thought we were meeting with a couple of people from Maderia, and it was about 10. So they came as a full entourage, but it was a really nice conversation and a lot of focus on the Guatemalan immigrants in our community and how we are working with that community from a communication perspective, because they, their primary language is only spoken language. It's not a written language. So we had some conversations about that. The Marin Council, let's say Marin, I always forget this, Marin. community from a communication perspective, because their primary language is only spoken language. It's not a written language. So we had some conversations about that. The Marin Council, let's say Marin, I always forget this, Marin County Committee of Mayors and Council Members, MCCMC. I was asked to provide an update with Renee Goddard from Fairfax on the homelessness committee that we chair, and we provided an update on our community homeless fund. Attended the Marin County Commission on Aging. And lastly, attended the Vivilon Groundbreaking. And that's it.
Thank you.
Busy, busy couple of weeks.
Busy, busy couple of weeks. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of this will be overlap because I attended a few things with the vice mayor. I did attend on Wednesday, May 18th, the Employee Recognition Luncheon. That was a wonderful event, as we're coming into a place in the pandemic where we can find spaces together. It was just wonderful to feel the energy of all the folks in the city and have folks recognized for their contributions. I was specifically moved by the service support area team for their recognition. What they do every day is so important to our community, and I was moved by their recognition, among others. On Saturday, May 21st, the Ritter Center held its annual Under the Stars event to raise awareness and fundraise in support of people who are either homeless or in places of instability. And I was able to provide a few comments around that. Overall, it was a very successful event to raise awareness and to fundraise. I also attended the State of the City on Monday, May 23rd. That was great. Mayor Kate gave a wonderful speech about where we are and where we're going. Thank you so much. And on Thursday, June 2nd, at the Marin County Council of Mayor and Council Members Water Policy Subcommittee, we're continuing to make progress in our report. We've committed to release our report later in the summer. And on Friday, June 3rd, I also attended the Vivilon Healthy Aging Campus Groundbreaking Event. There were 15 speakers, including myself and Mayor Kate. It was really great. I thought one of the, one of the two things I would say about that, one is, one person pointed out that such a celebration for, at the moment, a hole in the ground was quite striking. But I also took away too just how extraordinary it is, how much it takes to get to even that point. In my mind, I broke it down to 10 years and raising $40 million just to get to the point where you can create 66 units. It is an achievement, and we should make it more common. So, you know, let's continue to look for ways to make that a more common event rather than extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Just to follow up on the Vivilon thing, taking 10 years, it was an extraordinary event, and it was a confluence of personalities and events. It was just a whole lot of luck, brought those pieces together, foresight and initiative of people. It was a, unfortunately, a very rare alignment of stars, but it's coming to fruition, which is the amazing thing. So much of my commentary on the Councilmember Hill's report turned to what I've been busy doing. I attended regular and special meetings of the San Rafael Sanitation Agency. Our primary issue lately has been adopting a policy for lateral systems from houses that are downhill from the sewer main that they need to connect to. So we've adopted a policy that individual lateral systems will be required rather than shared. For CMSA, also regular and special meetings there. We're in negotiations with the unions there. They are going well, and we are hopeful for a long-term contract once again with the SEIU as well as our unrepresented employees. So that's coming along nicely. I've also been dealing with a lot of parking modification proposals, the reactions to the parking modification proposals in the Montecito and Dominican area. The Fire Department in cooperation with the DPW has calculated where there's not enough room for parking on the very narrow streets in that neighborhood, and so some areas will be red striped and parking prohibited. Neighbors are reacting to that proposal, and we're working through that in an orderly way to maintain the fire, the needs of the Fire Department to get their equipment up on all of those streets. But it's a big change for the neighborhood, and we're handling that very carefully. Also, continuing with the Lock Woman Oversight Committee, that, I go about things that take a long time. That's another 20-year project, but it's actually getting built. Things are getting built out there. Also attended the State of the City Dinner, and it was a lovely, the chair, the chamber really outdid themselves this year. It was so great to have it outside, like, why didn't we think of that a long time ago? It was fantastic, and the mayor's presentation was inspirational. And I also attended the MCCMC Water Policy Committee meetings with Councilmember Hill. Thank you.
Busy group. Okay, yeah. Councilmember Micah.
So yeah, good evening. Busy, busy month. I attended the MCE, Marin Clean Energy Board of Director meetings. There are a lot of conversations around healthy families, especially around multifamily to support the electrification of buildings, also around EV chargers and setting up infrastructures in place, especially in areas like the Canal District, so lots of conversations. And also, they have a new pilot in Pittsburgh to add backup batteries, which I'm very interested to learn more about, to see if we could do something like that in some areas in San Rafael. Also attended the San Rafael Chamber of the State of the City. Again, congratulations, Mayor Kate, it was very inspirational, and I was just like so happy to be able to see so many people that I haven't seen in so long in person. So it was beautifully done. So big kudos to the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. Also attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members, MCCMC. My co-chair for the Climate and Action Committee gave an update on what we've been working on the last year and also where we are working in the future. Also, I attended on May 31st, Stakeholder Committee around the priorities for the transportation plan in the canal. So it is just so nice to hear from the community where the needs are instead of us trying to figure it out. So it's very well done, so I'm very excited to be part of that. Also, Supervisor Rodoni invited me to his East San Rafael office hours. It was very well attended, bilingual, and a lot of the comments were around challenges with housing, gentrification, and actually some insecurity around the shooting in the schools and the parents being scared, and also the kids as well. So it's how it's affecting our entire community. And also, I attended the Canal Arts Projects Meeting. It's a new project that they are working on, great partnerships, so I'm really excited to see what will come out of that. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. My list is equally lengthy, but luckily, most of you covered many of the items, but I do want to start with the gun buyback that was held this past Saturday, and my gratitude to the San Rafael Police Department is absolutely enormous. The initiation of this whole project was with DA Lori Fergoli through the Gun Safety Collaborative, of which I'm a member, as well as Chief Spiller. And as a city, there are very few tools that we can, that we have to expend when it comes to how do we reduce gun violence in our community. It's really has to do with regulations at different levels of government, but one thing we can do is have a gun buyback. And we have one. We actually started planning it February, March? Yeah, Chief Spiller's nodding at me. So we started it months ago, and just with the timing with the national news, the turnout was unbelievable. We had planned it logistically to be similar to recent buybacks that were in San Mateo and San Francisco, and those received less than 400 weapons or 400 guns. So we, that was how we set ours. The punchline is, we received 552 weapons that were turned in. It was an exchange for cash, so depending on what you were turning in, it needed to be functional. And the team was incredible. The police, our police force showed up in force. In addition, we had law enforcement, the sheriff's office was there, Fairfax Police was there, Ross Police was there, Navado. So it really was a cross-county effort. We learned a lot. I think for all of us, it was our first buyback. It was incredibly successful, and we will look to do another one. I do want to confirm, all those firearms are going to be destroyed. Someone asked me that question, and I wanted to confirm that that is what's going to happen. And a special shout out to Captain Leon, who figured out the operational piece of it, of getting all these cars off the Last Camos and getting them through and all the safety protocols that went on. And none of it would have happened if we didn't have the financial piece in place because it was an exchange. So to Director Atiya Hayden, for her team, who brought in the money and made sure that it was out there, that was given out. And we felt safe about all the money being given out because there were so many police officers there. And it was about, and we're still debriefing on it, but we exchanged over $50,000 worth. So it was incredibly, incredibly successful, and the timing, I think, really resonated with people. I talked to a lot of the people that were participating, and I think they were really looking inward and saying, what can we do about the gun violence in our community? So again, eternal gratitude to all the stakeholders who made that happen. Marin Transit, here, we'll do a quick transit. So Marin Transit, we've met a couple times. There are free fairs for students and youth starting June 12th over the summer on any Marin Transit route, so that's exciting. For July 4th, the county fair, there will be free countywide on Marin Transit routes. You'll be able to go anywhere for free over those six days of the fair. So not just to the fair, but you can use it anywhere in the county. As mentioned before, but I want to keep mentioning it, so we are piloting from Muirwood Shuttle. It has been going from Pahom, which is in Sausalito, it is now moving to Larkspur Landing. So if you have people coming in and you're going to Muirwoods, the shuttle is now at the Larkspur Landing, and it ties in really nicely with Smart and with the ferry and with the other amenities there. Marin Transit, their fixed routes are up to 85% of pre-COVID ridership, which is fantastic, so that continues to go in the right direction. In addition, today, we approved the budget and talked about the yellow school bus, of which the San Rafael schools are continuing to participate in a big way, so that's fantastic. For Smart, again, trying to connect these transit opportunities, there'll be additional service on June 12th and June 26th to the Oracle Park Ferry. So you don't even have to get in your car if you want to go to Oracle Park. And then we also have been reviewing the draft budget for the fiscal year. The other items, I think everyone's covered it. The homeless conference, in addition to Sam Sembaris, we also had the Built for Zero team that are from Los Angeles. If you're not familiar with Built for Zero, it's both, so Sam Sembaris is about housing first, Built for Zero is what do you do upstream so that people aren't falling into homelessness? So that's an important part of the conversation. We had the State of the City, and I do want to add, we all added a different piece. Councilmember Hill talked about the Department of the Year, which was the Police Department group, and I have to give a shout out to the Employee of the Year, Captain Bob Sinnett of the Fire Department. That was fantastic. And of course, we commended Samantha Ramirez, who had been honored here as Citizen of the Year as well. So it was a great meeting. I agree very best, sitting out there and being outside with everyone was fantastic. You talked about Sanitation District, Vivilon Groundbreaking. It's a big hole in the ground, but boy, we cannot wait until that ribbon cutting in two years. And then finally, on Sunday, I spoke with the Villarreal property owners, and city manager talked about both the district conversations as well as the countywide conversations, but of course, all of us are available to talk to homeowners and property owners all the time, as I did on Sunday. So with that, you have a very busy group, and it's important that we do this upfront, I mean, at the beginning of the meeting, because we do have our dius work, but I just want folks to know what your council's doing in between the dius, the dius meeting. So if there's anyone in the chambers that would like to provide public comment on either the city manager's report or the city council members' report, now is the time. I don't see anyone, so I will ask the city clerk to see if there's anyone virtually.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. So if you would like to provide public comments, you need to press star nine if you're dialing in, or use the raise hand feature if calling in by phone, or if by Zoom, I'm sorry. And I do see hand raised. And just a note, you will be muted after two minutes has elapsed. Susan, are you there? I did see her hand raised a little bit earlier, so she may, she may be for another future comment.
Okay. Okay, with that, I will close the public comment and bring it to the consent calendar. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold from the consent calendar? Okay, not seen any. I'm going to open the public comment and ask Mr. Coleman to come back down and finish the comments because you are speaking to the assessment, which is consent item, remember? M. Yes. So the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Well, I could go on. How many minutes? I'm still limited to two minutes.
You get two more. And it's about the assessment part. Yes.
I'll pick up where I left off.
Thank you.
Our lagoon is shared equally by Spinnaker Point and Bay Point Lagoons Homeowners Associations. But the assessment district, which I mentioned before, and as you may know, is really, is the source for all the maintenance funding for the lagoon, is funded solely by Bay Point Lagoons Homeowners Association. And all I'm asking is that, is the city moves forward towards budgeting district projects, and I believe that's going to happen next month, that we, that our project of addressing the shoreline of the lagoons be part of that discussion. And honestly, we seek to have, try to get some funding for doing that, that really it's an upgrade, upgrade of what was originally a good plan, and it's just kind of time to update it to our current drought conditions and wildfire conditions. Thank you.
Thank you for your additional comments. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to comment on the consent calendar? Not seen any. I'll see if there's any virtual comments on the consent calendar.
I see no hands at the moment. I'll give everyone a couple seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Iran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you. So we have two special presentations this evening, and what we'll be doing is taking public comment on both the proclamations upfront. They were in the packet, and this is on both the LGBTQ plus Pride Month Proclamation as well as the Juneteenth Proclamation. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to give comment on either of these items? Not seen any? Is there anyone virtually?
If you'd like to provide public comment, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine if you're calling in. And I see no hands raised at the moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and read the proclamation, and I think, I don't know if Lynn is going to be on camera, maybe I'll read first and then, okay. So there she is. So this is a true hybrid format, so I'll be reading, and then Lynn Murphy will be making some comments. So I'll get right to it. So this is a proclamation on the month-long celebration of LGBTQ plus Pride Month in June. The City of San Rafael recognizes and proclaims the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus Pride Month. And whereas in honor of the 1969 Stonewall riots in Manhattan led by trans women of color in the subsequent First Pride March in New York City in June of 1970, whereas the City of San Rafael has a diverse LGBTQ plus community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. And whereas LGBTQ plus individuals continue to face hate and discrimination and persistent efforts to undermine their human rights in the U.S. and worldwide, and face higher rates of depression and suicide than any demographic subset, particularly among the trans community. And whereas LGBTQ plus people make vital contributions to and enhance the social and economic fabric of San Rafael in the fields of education, law, health, business, science, research, economic development, architecture, fashion, sports, government, music, film, technology, literature, civil rights, politics, and more. And because of the acts of courage of the millions who came out and spoke out to demand justice and of those who still fight and push for progress, our community continues to work towards a society in which the LGBTQ plus community can be seen, safe, and live with dignity. Therefore, let it be resolved that myself and the council and the City of San Rafael recognizes June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month to inspire equity, create alliances, celebrate diversity, and establish safe environments in our schools and in our communities throughout the city. And let it be known that City fully supports the rights, freedoms, and equal treatment of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people, and unequivocally show this support, we have been flying the Progress Pride flag at City Hall for the entirety of the month of June. So if you haven't been by the City, you should come by and check that out. And with that, we'll turn it over to- And with that, we'll turn it over to Lynn Murphy, who's joining us for any additional comments. Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and thank you to the San Rafael City Council for including me in this acknowledgement of Pride Month. The recognition that the city is giving to Pride is more than a token gesture. It is a message to every single child, teenager and every person that the LGBTQ plus members of our community matter. I am proud to work in a city that recognizes and honors the diversity of our community. By putting up one more rainbow in the sky at our city flagpole, it sends a message to every person going by that San Rafael cares and is queer friendly. I lived for 23 years hiding and keeping my identity a secret. It's pretty awesome that I now have the honor of loudly and proudly accepting this proclamation. And I am happy to say with my lovely wife and our rainbow dog. Happy Pride!
I know, I feel like clapping her, that was awesome. We knew that the animals would have to come by. Thank you, Lynn, for those comments. That was fantastic. Oh, she's already gone. Okay. All right. Wish we had, I wish we could have cupcakes for every single one of these, but we'll just have to do them every quarter for all the fantastic proclamations that we have. Okay, the next one is on commemorating Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. And Juneteenth was originally established in Texas on June 19th, 1866. It marked the first anniversary of the day that African Americans, their first learned of the Emancipation Proclamation, more than two years after it was initially issued. And whereas Juneteenth celebrations are a tribute to those African Americans who fought so long for freedom and worked so hard to make the dream of equality a reality. And whereas these celebrations are a time for reflection and rejoicing and to celebrate African-American culture and achievements through prayer and religious services, speeches, educational events, family gatherings and picnics and festivals with food, music and dancing. And whereas the City of San Rafael embraces diversity, equity and inclusion, and we believe that all are valued and welcome. And whereas we urge our community to join in celebrating Juneteenth as a day to honor and reflect on the significant role that African-Americans have played in the history of the U.S. and how they have enriched society through their steadfast commitment to promoting unity and equality. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed the first, or signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, declaring the first federal holiday since Martin Luther King Jr. Day in 1983. That is an accomplishment that we've been able to witness. And whereas the City of San Rafael, its elected officials and our employees acknowledge the significance of this day and the importance of Black culture, resilience and achievements in our country's history. Let it be resolved that effective June 2022, Juneteenth is proclaimed as an official holiday for the City of San Rafael in observance of the emancipation of enslaved persons in the United States and the city reaffirms its commitment to safeguard these civil rights, safety and dignity of all its residents. And I see that, I always call you Tiny, I'm sorry, I know that's incredibly informal. Jonathan Bullock, thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. Well, my name is Antonette Bullock, also known as Tiny. Thank you so much, Mayor Kate, for having me tonight. I mean, everything you said in the proclamation almost hits now on it. I really appreciate you having me here tonight to speak. Celebrating Juneteenth has always been a special time for me, my community and where I come from. It's, like you said, a time to rejoice, fellowship, spirituality and also honoring the struggle and the resilience of our ancestors. Accepting the proclamation today is so special for the first time. It being not only an actual federal holiday, like you said before, that the city and the police department is now observing it as the holiday. And that right there to me is showing me nothing but progress. You know, even though we have still a whole lot, we've still got to do, but that right there in itself is progress. In light of all the tragedies that's been happening in the world, like the shooting in Texas and the racially motivated shooting in Buffalo, New York, it's hard to sometimes look at progress and see, is it, is it happening, you know? Is it happening? And I'm consoled by the words of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, that darkness cannot drive out darkness and only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And I want us to try and continue just to love each other. That's all we can do. Thank you so much for having me tonight and happy Juneteenth, everybody.
Thank you, Antonette. Those were beautiful. It's clapping too. No, thank you, thank you both. It's important that we take the moment to read these proclamations and to reflect on the words and what it really means for our community and how it shows up in our community. So I'm glad that we had that. So thank you. Cupcakes to come next time. So hey, it's a celebration. These are moments of celebration. And totally switching gears, really, you can't switch gears more than I, than we are about to because we're now going to talk about a special tax on properties at Locklamon 10, the Melo Roos District. And Director Bill Guerin has the honor of leading us in this next exciting agenda item. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And Council, nice to see you again.
Set on point.
I wanted to take a moment to introduce Stephen Acker, a new employee to Public Works and relatively new to the city. He's been given the great assignment of the four Assessment District reports. When he arrived on April 11th, he's done a great job of getting caught up on those and being prepared to present tonight the two that are, are being presented. Also want to recognize that Al Cornwell is in the audience. You all met him many times, or I think most of you have met him before, but he's been helping with our reports annually for many, many years and is here to answer any questions that come up. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Stephen, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the introduction, Bill. That's a hard act to follow after those two special presentations, but I'll do my best to talk about local taxes here. Mayor Kate, members of the City Council, thank you so much for having me. My name's Stephen Acker. I'm here on behalf of the Department of Public Works to talk about two community facilities or community facilities districts in our city. The first is Locklamon 10. I think I have a presentation here that I'll follow along with. Oh, I gotta.
Give you a moment. Because I don't, we don't see it quite yet.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
It's fine. Okay. So first want to start with just the purpose of a Melo Roos Community Facilities District. The primary purpose is to just fund ongoing maintenance and public access areas and storm system improvements within the district. Melo Roos Community Facilities Districts are a type of special task district that are formed when property owners within a geographic area agree to impose a tax on property in order to fund infrastructure improvements or services. For the Locklamon 10 Community Facilities District, it's primarily for storm system improvements within that district. Here's a brief slide that goes over kind of where this district is at in the city on the east end of the city borders. It's located on the Point San Pedro Peninsula. There's 29 parcels and one parcel that is adjacent to the open space area. It was formed in the early 1990s to fund landslide mitigation and drainage systems. There we go. So this special assessment is broken down into three dedicated funds. There's a self-insurance fund, there's a sinking fund and there's a maintenance fund. The self-insurance fund provides a fund balance of up to $500,000 plus accumulated interest to cover the deductible amount of the city's insurance should a landslide occur in the watershed above the district. The sinking fund provides for long-term capital replacement of drainage, infrastructure and facilities as the original facilities may fall into disrepair. And finally, the maintenance fund provides for maintaining drainage facilities within the Locklamon 10 boundary to include annual cleaning of drainage structures, monitoring drainage and landslide mitigation systems. Those are ditches, catch basin, span holes. And for all of you that don't know what those technical terms are, which I didn't, I have some nice pictures at the end of this presentation to kind of explain that. And, you know, down to the brass tacks of this, you know, these are proposed assessment for this year. On the very bottom there in 2022 and 2023, we can see the change year over year. If you see the sinking fund, it's at 4,891. The maintenance fund, it goes up to 23,418. The self-insurance fund is at zero because we have already reached the $500,000, you know, threshold for that for, for some years now. Just a couple of notes on this. We average more than $30,000 a year on maintenance. That primarily includes drainage clearing, asphalt patch and crack seal and vegetation management. Those are primarily, you know, expensed through employee, you know, Department of Public Works employee work hours when they're out there in these, you know, high up in the hills in Locklamon 10 area to clean out all the drainage facilities and, and to fix the roads so that our vehicles can get up there quickly in the, in case of an emergency. I mean, I have some more details about how we got to these numbers, which I'm happy to go into, but it's fairly straightforward. It kind of matches the inflation factor of our region here in the San Francisco, Oakland, San Rafael area. And, you know, we were lucky this, this last year in that there wasn't any major catastrophic, catastrophic events. But of course, you know, we always anticipate that. And these, these facilities and structures are in place so that if there is a major flood or some other type of natural catastrophe, the homes in this region are going to be completely leveled and they'll have some protection up there. So now I'll go into a few nice pictures that our Public Works staff have provided. And that, that's about it. That finishes up my presentation for this Locklamon 10 Community Facilities District.
Thank you. We love both the chart and the photos because I think it helps really define what we're talking about here. I'll actually start and see if Councilmember Bushy, as it's in your district, you have any questions on this item?
I, I, I do, but it's, it's a broader question of the, from the four reports. In the report on the Point San Pedro Road Assessment, there's a reference to a 4% uncollected rate. I didn't see a reference to the uncollectibles in this report. Is, is there an uncollectible number and if so, what is it?
Well, I don't believe that that is a, well, I'll let, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, Al, why don't you come on up and introduce yourselves and yes, thank you for being here.
My name's Al Cornwell and I'm with the firm of CSW Superstroll. And we've done these Assessment Districts for a number of years, as you're painfully aware probably. Anyway, the, the answer to your question is, is this particular district has 28 contributors? They don't happen to have any deadbeats in the last few years. So we did not, we did not anticipate any deadbeats next year. And so we did not provide for that uncollected assessments.
And this phenomenon of deadbeats.
Maybe that's not the right.
I, I think that is. I like, I like your terminology and I will adopt it. Why are there only deadbeats in the Point San Pedro Road Assessment, which would actually include this area?
Well, there's, okay. In the four districts that we prepared this year, which was Point San Pedro Road, Baypoint Lagoons, Communities Facilities District Number Two, which you'll hear next, and Locklamon 10. The others do have uncollected assessments. The other three do.
They do. And do the, is the number for the other three similar to 4%?
It's, I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, the actual number. But basically what we do is take the uncollected assessments for the year 2122 and we compare that with what we expected to collect and that percent is what we use for next year.
Well, I understand the arithmetic. My, my desire is to diminish the number of deadbeats and hold up Locklamon Number 10 as the correct way to do this. And to, but we should really have a plan for those other districts to move towards zero and not just keep chit-chatking through the arithmetic and thereby rewarding the deadbeats, but that's a long.
Well, I don't think you're really, I mean, it's, it's a part of the county tax collection system. So if people aren't going to pay their property taxes, that's when this gets collected. So it's not a separate, this is paid as a part of your normal property tax. I'm sure you're aware of that.
Right, but 4% of the people cannot be not paying their property taxes. Is that, or maybe they are, but we should, we should know that. But anyway.
I can't talk to that. I mean, I can't speak to that countywide. I don't know what that number is, but that's, that's why we've done it.
Well, thank you. The important point is that Locklamon 10 is paying their bills. So that's great. Thank you.
Very well said.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kurtz, any questions? Okay, Councilmember Hill?
No questions.
Thank you. Okay. So easy just to see you guys. I don't have any questions either. So any members of the public in the chambers like to approach? Nope, I can recognize all of you in the chambers. It's city staff, for those that can't see the chambers right now. Virtually, are there any comments?
Thank you. If you'd like to provide public comments and you're calling in by phone, you'll need to press star nine. And if you're on Zoom, you'll need to use the raised hand feature. And I see no hands raised. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And unless there are any additional questions, I would entertain a motion. Councilmember Bushy, would you like to?
I move that we adopt the resolution setting a special tax for Community Facilities District Number 1992-1 Locklamon 10 for fiscal year 2022-23.
I'll second. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Next item seems probably similar to the first one, but we are ready to see more photos and another, another graph or another chart. So Stephen. Need this, oh, no, got it.
Is that right?
Yeah. Yep, it's at this.
Yep.
It's the same one. Yeah. Number two. Yeah, it's number two. Right. Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I found that. Okay. So this is about our, our second Community Facilities District, the Locklamon Marina, Melo Roos District. This one is a little bit larger and it's newer. And I'm going to do my best to answer any and all questions involved. So this, as we went through previously, you know, the purpose of these districts is to just fund the ongoing maintenance of public asset, public access areas and improvements within the district. A little bit of history and background about this district. As you can see on the right there of that purple star, it's also in Councilmember Mary Beth Bushy's district. It's on the east end of the city boundaries. That beautiful artist's rendering on the kind of middle top portion is what everything will look like according to the artist once everything's finished. And on the bottom middle there is kind of just a, there's a picture that I'll go in that has a little bit more detail there. Essentially, the, this district was formed in 2010. There was a planned total of 92 units to go in this mixed-use development. As I had said earlier, the primary purpose of the district is to maintain the park and recreation improvements that would be funded through the special tax. And, and just for the entire kind of Locklamon Marina, as it's called, it's about 131 acres of Thailand's Marina basins and uplands. Okay, so this photo kind of shows the area of responsibility that the Community Facilities District is responsible for maintaining. The areas in green are, are those areas that the district is responsible for maintaining. So those areas in green include. So, um, those areas in green include the Marina Green and Boardwalk, a kayak launch, a park play equipment and, and area, pedestrian pathways along the West Jettie Spit and East Jettie Spit, viewing areas along the West Jettie Spit and the East Jettie Spit, uh, public restrooms, fit a fish cleaning station, park and informational signs with these areas, lawn turf shrubs and ground cover irrigation systems, stormwater drainage inlets, and a conservation and seasonal wetland area and roadways and sidewalks. So there's, there's, there's quite a bit, uh, going on here with lots of variation. Um, as you can see, it's, it's kind of a, um, there's lots of moving parts. As for the, the special tax, there's two primary components, the capital reserve and the annual maintenance. The capital reserve, uh, is a, is a portion of the annual assessment that's set aside to fund the larger, long-term capital improvements, such as the eventual replacement of pavement, curb and gutter roadway and other improvements that were constructed as a part of the initial development. At the end of the useful life of these large-scale public improvements, enough funds, you know, must be available to have them accumulated to replace those large, um, those large improvements. Uh, for example, like the resurfacing of the access road. By June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, that capital reserve fund is projected to have a balance of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And an additional hundred and twenty-one thousand will be added this year. Um, based on, and this is based on previous year's contributions increased by twenty percent due to the rapid rise in construction costs for capital improvements. Also, a lot of the details of these, uh, of the tax are included in the staff report and the engineer's report. I'm happy to go through those as well if we'd like. But the annual maintenance is the other part that's meant to fund the regular and annual maintenance activities, um, for all the public facilities, such as landscaping and medians and pathways, garbage service, restroom maintenance and the semi-annual monitoring of wetland habitats. Yeah, so after that, kind of just go into the, the actual numbers here. As, as previously referenced, the annual assessment has these two portions, the capital reserve to save for long-term replacement of major infrastructure. Yep. Oh, pardon me, doing two things at once. To say for the long-term replacement of major infrastructure, that's the, um, the, uh, capital reserve. And then the annual maintenance costs. Uh, the maintenance portion hasn't really been utilized because the improvements have not been entirely accepted by the city. Um, therefore, this portion of the annual assessment fund continues to build. The capital reserve fund continues to build as it was designed in order to generate sufficient funds in a number of years to resurface the roadways and replace pathways. Uh, so as you can see in the, you know, I guess in the middle column on the very bottom, uh, per the engineer's report, the recommended, um, assessment for properties in the district is at two thousand two hundred and three dollars and eighteen cents per residential unit. Um, there's a different rate for the non-residential. Uh, as you can see in that column one over to the right, and then a different cost for the Marina itself in a lump sum amount at one hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven. There's a, kind of a larger year-over-year increase from two, from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. And, uh, that's because the level of landscaping maintenance is significantly higher than, you know, that what would be expected at a normal city park. Um, there's much more attention given to detail, to the plants and the maintenance, to the cleaning facilities and the walkways. Um, and as we prepare for a gradual increase of the assessment over time, uh, we're not charging the full amount that is, is permitted, um, under the, the district's, guidelines and rules. Um, at that, I'll, uh, I'll finish my report and, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. All right, we didn't get any photos of the fish cleaning station, but next time we will have that. Um, Councilmember Bushy.
No questions.
Other, yeah, you asked the ones about the uncollected, but I think your, your message was heard loud and clear on that one. Yep. Vice Mayor Kurtz.
No.
Yep. Councilmember Hill?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. That, I don't see anyone in, uh, the chambers who'd like to give public comment on this item. So we'll see if there's anyone virtually who'd like to chime in.
If you're participating on Zoom and you'd like to provide public comments, you'll need to use the raise hand feature. And if you're calling in, you'll need to press star nine. And I see no hands raised as of right now. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back. Um, unless there are any other questions, I would entertain a motion.
Could, could I have some comments?
Yes, please do. Yes, yes, of course, of course.
I just want to take a, a, a minute to put this in context of what we're doing here. Um, this started, uh, the, the development there has been in the works for more than twenty years. Um, we approved the development in two thousand and seven. It is now maybe three-quarters built out, um, about. Um, these amenities were the driving force, uh, that, um, that planning unit development as it came forward. These are extremely popular waterfront amenities to the community far and wide. I personally have been on the, 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 in these, uh, walks out on these boardwalks with at least two members of the, of the city council. So, um, it's a very popular place, um, and this sort of nuts and bolts work, how is this going to be maintained and taken care of? This is the, the ongoing operations of how we make these amenities available to the public and how we carry through the ideas that we have at the Planning Commission and in the, um, development space. So it's great to see it, um, at this level of, um, fruition. So I know it seems like a boring engineering report, but actually this is really super important to keeping things, um, to, to keeping a, uh, to carrying forward a, um, a plan that's been in the works, um, for decades. So with that bit of historical context, I'm happy to move that we, um, adopt the resolution setting the special tax for the City of San Rafael Community Facilities District Number Two, the Biljet Locklomen Marina for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second that motion.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yerem Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five-zero. And thank you, Councilmember Bushy. I think it is important to connect those dots, like, why are we doing this? Stephen, thank you. That was an excellent presentation. Thank you. Okay, that last item, um, uh, yep, uh, for a public hearing is board and commission update. And I think I'm turning it over to the city clerk for this presentation.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. As you all know, I'm Lindsay Lara. I'm the city clerk. And tonight I'm going to be presenting the boards and commissions update. Before I start though, I need to make sure that I give some really big shout-outs to all, everyone who's been involved in making sure that we get here to this day. So, uh, former and current library and recreation director Catherine Kufa and Susan Andrade Wax. Both of them are staff liaisons to the Park and Recreation Commission. Also Lauren Davini, who's a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee staff liaison. And Ally Judasi and Leslie Mendez, who are staff liaisons to the Planning Commission, as well as all of our staff liaisons for our boards and commissions that have held a good amount of meetings with me over the last couple of years. Common Knowledge, who's our consultant for resident engagement. Um, and our boards and commissions who have held a couple of meetings with me as well. And then Mayor Kate, thank you for your guidance on this as well over the last couple of years. Um, for a little bit of background, we have twelve boards and, and commissions in San Rafael. And each board and commission has a staff liaison appointed to them. The staff liaison's role is to set the agenda, create staff reports, um, make sure that we have quorum for those meetings, uh, send out the agendas, make sure they're published within the Brown Act. And then we have our volunteer, uh, board and commission committee members. And they're, we, we can't do anything without them. So their, their voice is so important to our boards and commissions and they're, they serve it in as, in, an advisory role to the city council. And then we have one decision-making body. Um, but we're so thankful to our volunteers, even folks who maybe apply to serve on our boards and commissions, but don't get appointed. Um, they spend countless hours really serving our community. So huge, huge kudos to them. Um, and one of the roles of the staff liaison is to amend our bylaws or guidelines. And we have many ways that we've been doing that traditionally over the years. And that's been either a guideline, a bylaw, uh, or our ordinance updates. So as a result of that, it's kind of been a little bit of the Wild, Wild West over the last twenty-five years. Different styles, different formats, and some things are missing in bylaws that are included in other bylaws. Um, and so in an effort to have more uniformity and consistency, over the last couple of years, we've really tried to, um, have bylaw templates for any new, newly established boards and commissions. So most recently, our public app, our public art review board, they use the bylaw template that we've used, ADA committee, when they made amendments, use that as well. Most of those boards and commissions are moving to a five-member term. It's kind of the magic number for membership to be able to have representation throughout our community and also have a manageable, um, group for our staff liaison, as well as having an efficient meeting for deliberations. The changes this evening that are being recommended include membership composition to some of the boards and commissions. And I'll go over, it'll be the Planning Commission, the Park and Recreation Commission, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, eligibility requirements for each, and board and commission and committee scope. The scope will only be impacted by the Park and Recreation Commission and the Planning Commission, and I'll get into that in further detail. Um, since we're in our ordinances to make an amendment, we noticed that we have masculine language with that, without our, or throughout our municipal code. So we're going to take that opportunity right now and capitalize on that and change it to gender neutral. We have already previously approved, the city council previously approved term limits. Those aren't indicated in, in, in any of our bylaws. So we just want to make sure that those are in there so it's really clear to anyone who's newly appointed to our boards and commissions. And then we'd be outlining, recommending outlining voluntary resignations. So we don't have voluntary resignations at, at the moment. So if someone was to stop showing up, there's really no way of knowing that they've resigned unless they notify us. So this outlines, uh, a way that we can move forward if someone misses any unexcused absences, no-call, no-show, and they haven't contacted the staff liaison, and they've missed more than two, two meetings in a calendar year in that fashion. They are eligible to reapply, um, and be reappointed by the city council if the city council were to choose to do so. And the reason for that is just in case there's a family emergency or they're in the hospital and they're unable to contact the staff liaison and let them know that they're not available to attend that evening. Also, another recommended action would be to provide authority to the city council to approve compensation by resolution. If they were to choose to do that down the line, it's just flexibility. That's not up for discussion tonight as far as compensation, but just gives a little bit of more flexibility down the line. So for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, right now the membership is nine members with seven regular members and two youth members. Uh, each of them are voting, and then we have two alternate non-voting members. That's definitely the largest committee that we have in San Rafael, nine members. We're recommending that change to five members, to have five regular voting members, and then one alternate non-voting member. The eligibility currently is that they must reside or own business or property in city limits. The recommended action here would be to reside or work in city limits. Regular members currently must be eighteen years or older if they're not a youth member. And we're recommending remain, to be silent on age requirements to allow youth members to be appointed anytime. Um, and we can always focus our recruitment on youth members if we're saying that we don't, we're not getting any applications coming through. Our current, uh, bylaws are silent on compensation, they're silent on voluntary resignation and silent on the term limits that were previously approved in two thousand and fourteen. And so the bylaws that would be approved, if, if approved, would provide authority to the city council to approve compensation by resolution by amending the bylaws. They would outline those two unexcused absences in the calendar year by, that would constitute a voluntary resignation. And it just highlights what's already been approved in two thousand and fourteen, which is a maximum of two consecutive four-year terms for a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. For the Park and Recreation Commission, we currently have seven members on the Park and Recreation Commission. And we're recommending that be moved to five members. We do have masculine language throughout our ordinance, so we would be recommending gender-neutral language while we can. Uh, that's mainly seen with chairman or councilman, so we'd be moving that to council member and chair. Um, in our ordinance, it indicates and makes comments towards term of office and removal. We're recommending deleting the section. It's in the charter. That is within the city council's purview. So it's duplicative and we're just recommending deleting that from that section. And operating budget review, this is one of the scope areas that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. And we're recommending deleting the review, comment and recommendations regarding department operating budget. And the reason for this is ultimately it's the city council's purview to review and, and approve the budget. And any member of the public and any board or commission member is welcome to come to this meeting and make comments related to any of the department budgets during that time. And also would be more consistent with our other boards and commissions as well. It currently is silent on voluntary resignation and silent on the term limits that were approved in two thousand and fourteen. And, and also silent on, oh no, sorry, it's just silent on the term limits approved in two thousand and fourteen. And so we would be recommending adding the same clauses as we did with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And there is currently, it lists a requirement to serve without compensation set by the municipal, is, is currently in the municipal code. We're, we're recommending that we'll provide authority to the city council to approve compensation of commissioners by resolution. Now for our Planning Commission, we have seven members. We're not recommending removing or changing that to a five-member commission. We are keeping that at seven members. However, we are recommending modifying the composition of, of that, of membership for those seven members. And as it's being recommended, it would be include four district represent, representatives and three at-large members. We would be recommending, uh, right now there's some outdated information about the implementation process just from way back when the Planning Commission was implemented and how we were going to move forward doing that. So we're just recommending that be deleted. Uh, for the chair and secretary selection established currently in the municipal code, we're recommending that be deleted. And that'll be established by resolution and by law or, or within the committee. Meeting frequency and quorum information is specified in the municipal code as, as of now. And we're recommending that same, that that be established by resolution. And the requirement to serve without compensation, uh, that's currently listed that they're not to serve with compensation. We're recommending that, that we give the authority to the city council to approve compensation of commissioners by resolution if they choose to do so in the future. Once again, silent on voluntary resignation and silent on term limits. And so we would be including those in the bylaws. And the only thing I want to add here, just in case you're not paying as much attention to this part, uh, for the Planning Commission, it is a maximum of three consecutive four-year terms, whereas, uh, that's only the designer view board and the Planning Commission. Every, every other board or commission is a maximum of two term limits. So for implementation, council liaisons and alternates, all changes will be implemented through attrition. So nothing's going to happen tomorrow or within thirty days after final adoption, if that was to be adopted. Nothing would happen immediately. We won't, we won't have everyone off of our boards and commissions and then reappoint based on the new model. If the ordinance or ordinances are passed to print, they'll return to the city council on June twenty-first for final adoption. And then if adopted, they'll be in effect thirty days after that. We are currently recruiting for Park and Recreation Commission and Planning Commission vacancies. So we'll wait until after the thirty-day period to make the appointments and we'll use this new model going forward. So just to see how exactly this is going to work, for Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we have three terms that are expiring at the end of November. And those three members happen to be terming off. So we have an opportunity anyways to appoint what would have been three new members. And instead, we would just be appointing two members to a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And we have our two youth members that have actually been expired, and we're recommending those not be filled. And so right before November coming up for that, uh, vacancy that would be coming up, we'll recommend to appoint two members with no age requirement, bringing the, the total membership to five members. The Park and Recreation Commission, which we're currently recruiting for now, there are three terms that are expiring at the end of this month. One member is terming out, one member has decided to not reapply. And so one of the incumbents will be, has reapplied and is, is, um, going to be interviewed. And so the recommended action, uh, right as soon as this goes into effect, if approved, would be to appoint one member and bring the total membership to five members for the Park and Recreation Commission. For the Planning Commission, we have two terms that are expiring at the end of June. And the recommendation would be to appoint two members. And they could either be district representatives or they could be at-large members. So it's really ultimately going to be up to the city council based on the pool of applicants you receive. So you, we can kind of choose those first two to be district representatives or an at-large member. And then at the next round of, of interviews, we could do the same until we have our full four, four district representatives. So I just wanted to give kind of a little bit of a preview of what it looks like now. And so what it looks like now, the composition of our Planning Commission is we have three of our Planning Commissioners that are currently residing in District Three, three that are currently residing in District Two, and one that's currently residing in District Four. So we have no one representing District One at the moment, and the majority of folks are in their first or second term. A little about council liaisons and alternates. So, uh, every year at the end, at the end of, um, the year, we appoint council liaisons to boards and commissions. So each one of you is appointed to boards and commissions. And we don't have any outlines on what exactly that means. So we wanted to have a little bit of information on what that, what that means for you and what your role is. So essentially it's to stay informed of your board or commission throughout the year, stay abreast of everything that's going on. Report out here at our council meeting, is it any, uh, anything that's going on at our board and commissions that's important? Um, we would, we would ask that you assist with volunteer application review. What that means is that sometimes there might be one vacancy for the fire commission, for example, but we might get thirteen applicants. Um, we might not have the time to be able to interview all of them. So we'll, we'll recommend that the mayor and the council liaison review those applications and get them to a more manageable number. applications and get them to a more manageable number to move forward to an interview. And then I think most exciting, you serve as a mentor to these folks. So they look to you as exactly how to, how to act during meetings, decorum, and so if they have any questions about how they could be the most effective board or commission member that they can, they can come to you and you can, you can mentor them. As for alternate members, once again, we've had alternate members forever, but we have no guidelines on how alternate members, what they should be doing. And similar to our bylaws, it's kind of the wild, wild west, where every board or commission has alternates that do some things a little bit differently. So this is the expectation for our alternate members. It would be to attend all meetings and provide input and deliberation and questions. Attending all meetings also includes preparing for the meeting, reading the agenda packets, preparing to be able to make deliberations if someone's not able to attend last minute. They wouldn't vote unless a voting member is absent, but they are, they are able to provide any sort of input, ask questions of staff, and participate in deliberations. So the recommended action, before I go into all of the recommended actions for the evening, there is, we did catch an inconsistency in the ordinance for the planning commission, and it's in section 2.16.070, and it struck right there, but it says meeting frequency, and no longer should not say commission composition, that was an error, and other operations of the planning commissions shall be set by resolution of the council. The commission composition is still being set by ordinance, and it's currently in the ordinance as, as being recommended now. So once it's time, if, if approved, if you want to make the motion, you can just say to include comments by staff.
Should you also change the title?
Yes, and we'll remove composition of planning commission. Yes. So the recommended action, thank you, Councilwoman Bushy. The recommended action for this evening would be to adopt the resolution amending the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee bylaws, pass to print an ordinance amending the municipal code related to the park and recreation commission, adopt the resolution approving the park and recreation commission bylaws, pass to print an ordinance amending the municipal code related to the planning commission as amended, adopt the resolution approving the planning commission bylaws. And I don't know what kind of city clerk I'd be if I didn't have a shameless plug. If you're interested in serving on a board or commission, please apply online. You could subscribe to be notified of any vacancies that are coming up, and you can do so at www.cityofsanrefel.org/boards-commissions. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, and we know what type of city clerk you are. You're an amazing one, so we don't mind the shameless plug at all. I'm sure there are going to be questions, so I will call on my councilmembers, our Vice Mayor Kurtz. Go ahead with any questions.
Thank you, thank you. Great report. I do have a question in terms of training and onboarding. Is that done at the, at the commission, you know, at the level, or is it done at the clerk level?
Yeah, great, great question. And every staff liaison is the one who's really going forward with getting them acquainted with the board or commission. They kind of have a meeting with them in advance, and all the staff liaisons do do that differently. We have Leslie here, and they hold a very serious orientation for the planning commission, the designer view board. There's a meeting where they give them their bylaws, and they try to get them acquainted with exactly what it's going to look like. But we could, we could definitely make sure that that's more unified as well down the line, just to make sure that everyone's getting the same, the same information. And I think, I didn't mention in my presentation, but I meant to, is one of the most important reasons to have consistency in your bylaws is that it makes it easier for our public to be able to participate. It makes it easier for volunteers to want to volunteer if they know exactly what they're expecting, and especially for folks, I know there's people sitting on council who maybe started on the citizens advisory committee or the planning commission, and it's consistent as you move along. So if you have any desire to move up to the planning commission or serve on the city council and run for office, there's consistency with how we manage our public meetings when we have consistency in our bylaws. So just to answer that, I think the orientation could also, could use some consistency.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Over this way, Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, I have a question. I think this is great, by the way, having more like consistency. So I'm curious about, I believe that it was in the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. I'm thinking about the youth, so we are going to remove that, and I know that is very hard to get some of the youth to participate because also they are continuously rotating. So how are we going to continue, I guess, having that youth voice in that commission?
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. And the youth member has, it has been a difficult role to fill. We've been really lucky, I want to say, for the last several years with our current member Tyler and Shashana. They were great. They are two-year terms, and so they eventually go to high school, and they go to college, and they no longer serve, or they, they turn 18, and they're no longer technically eligible for the youth member position if they don't go to college. So it has been a little bit difficult to do that. I think that we still focus our recruitment in the same way that we did whenever we had bicycle and pedestrian youth members. I think we still push that, and that would be really the goal of the city clerk's office, to make sure that we're, we're pushing our efforts out in the same way.
Okay, well, that's great. Thank you. And oops, I just lost it. What was the other question? Well, one of them was around, I'm glad that in terms of compensation, do we have any idea in the future to offer some compensation? Because I know that is like a big, you know, cause for equity. Some people cannot just volunteer unless they are getting compensated. So is that something that we are going to be evaluating soon?
Yeah, I think, I think that's definitely why it's in here, is to be able to have the ability. There's a lot of work, like I mentioned, for our volunteers who are, for our planning commissioners, any of our board to commissions. They're spending a good amount of time to be able to serve, and the equity is, that piece is, is really important. So it really just allows for the city council at a future date, if you were to decide to do so, you can have that conversation about compensating, compensating our volunteers.
Okay, that's great. And my last question is about language. Do you have to, is it always run in English? Can you have translation provided? Or, you know, where are we in terms of the commissions right now?
Yeah, another great question, a lot of great questions. So Pickleweed Advisory Committee is actually, they're publishing their agendas bilangually, so they're, they're in Spanish and they're in English. I'm not sure if they're using interpretation, and right now, as it stands, for any of our public meetings, if someone does want interpretation, then they can always request that through our office, and we make sure that we provide that for them. But as, as it stands as a practice, we, I, I don't believe that there's any interpreting at any of our other boards and commissions.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushy. No questions, no questions. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I noticed a discrepancy in the presentation versus what's in the bylaws proposed, which is, it doesn't read two meetings in a calendar year, it reads two consecutive meetings, and I just wanted to clarify which one we mean.
Give me one second. And is it in the bylaws for each?
All three read as two consecutive meetings result in a voluntary resignation, but in the presentation it was reading two in a calendar year, which seems pretty extreme if there were.
Yeah, that's my error. It should be consecutive.
Okay.
Thank you.
So wait, the resolution says what you wanted to say?
Yeah, it's in the, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, the resolution is basically adopting the bylaws that are in the attachment, and that is accurate per his comments. So it won't be two per calendar year, it'll be two consecutive.
Thank you. Additional questions?
No, that was, that was it.
The only question I had, and I see that Director Kupas here as well, I know that internally, since we've done all this work, park and rec and library department has combined, so I don't know if there's any further conversations around that, or we're just right now sticking with the consistency of these, because we want the boards and commissions to support the work that we're doing at the city, and those are now a combined department. So I didn't know if there was any thoughts on that. And that's, I know not on the agenda today, but just really as we kind of look forward.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Kate. I think we have been talking about that. I would say at the moment, both boards, or the board and the, the library board of trustees and the park and rec commission have quite a lot on their plate.
Okay.
And I did actually hear from some of the commissioners who read that in the staff report, thinking, wow, if we were to drop even further, that'd be, there's a lot of voluntary activities going on, kind of subcommittees. So I think that's something we can continue to discuss, but perhaps at a future point in time.
Okay, thank you. No, I appreciate that clarification. Okay. Any other questions? Will you think of any after public comment in the chambers? Anyone want to comment? I'm thinking not, because they're all staff. So great that you're all here, by the way. It's nice to see everybody. Any comments virtually?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a couple of hands at this time.
Hello, Amy Likeover. May I address a question directly to Lindsay and have her respond? I know that we cannot do that to the council.
Right, no, just go ahead and ask a question, and then at the end we'll get the people.
Thanks, Kate. So, well, Lindsay and I have been communicating a little bit about the commissions, because there has been a problem staffing them, getting people a sufficient pool of candidates. And my question to Lindsay was, with the different models that I've sent you from this municipality that I'm, I'm familiar with, have you implemented any of those suggestions? I didn't see them on the website.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
That's the first one, and the second is, I'm sorry, Kate. Anyway, yeah, I'm just a little bit curious for the planning commission, the concept of having one representative per district, whether that might have come from, is it the council feeling that you're between a rock and a hard place with potential, oh, I don't know, litigation from, with the original concept of not having equal representation? Or is it because, because you think it's a good idea? The reason I ask is, I've experienced some development projects where a council member lives in the district, right, is a district rep, but has to recuse him or herself because he lives, he or she lives too close to the project. Whereas, in my opinion, truly, I think people who live, I know that there may be, others may not believe this, people who live near something often know more about it than people who live further away. So I'm just wondering whether this might exclude input from, from council, excuse me, from planning commission members who actually live near a project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We have another hand.
Thank you.
Good evening, air and councilmembers. I'm Kate Powers. I'm a member of the San Rafael BPAC, and I just wanted to make a comment regarding the changes that are being proposed. I wanted to say that I was surprised that this came before city council, because we had a BPAC meeting that was publicly noticed last Wednesday, and it was not agendized or discussed or as an information item. I know that I'm not alone. There's a few other BPAC members that were surprised that this was on the city council agenda this evening, and I was also contacted by a couple of members who regularly, members of the public that regularly attend the BPAC meetings. I feel that seven members plus a youth member as opposed to five allow for greater diversity of input on the projects that come before BPAC. I feel that it supports ad hoc committee, ad hoc subcommittee efforts without burning them out, like the one that led to the updated BPAC charter in 2015, the focused 2018 master plan update review, and also developing input on a focused basis on locations for bike parking downtown. And also that seven makes it easier for broader representation on other city planning process, efforts, including the general plan, the parks and rec plan, et cetera. Transportation planning, like land use planning, to me requires local knowledge to make good plans and to gain support prior to project implementation, like the Third Street project. My experience over the last few years has benefited from working with folks with a broad array of experiences and expertise, including the student members. And I think that with seven members, if you don't have a couple of people that can make a member, a meeting, you still have pretty broad.
Thank you, Kate.
There is another hand.
Yes, this is Jean Severinghouse. I have laryngitis, forgive me. City council, I was surprised by this showing up, and I'm, I would like to ask that you consider not including this decision about the BPAC without including a conversation, a public meeting, at a public meeting with the BPAC. I, this was a real surprise to me, and I do attend all the meetings. In my experience, San Rafael has 22 square miles and a diversity of kinds of pedestrians and bicyclists, and in order to develop political will, you need people in all the different regions to be participating. The student members have been highly effective. I'm also on the task force for Safe Routes to Schools, and really the encouragement of having a specific student member apply has been critical to having a student member, and they've both recently been very effective. I would like to see the BPAC stay at seven members plus a youth member, but I really think this should be discussed at a BPAC meeting and not be passed tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I see one more hand at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, city councilmembers. Susan Coleman here from Terre-Linda. Just a couple of comments on the proposed changes for the planning commission. Number one, I do think the meeting frequency should stay within the municipal code and not be decided by resolution. I'm glad to see that the composition component came out of the draft changes. I noted that we didn't speak at all about eligibility requirements, but I certainly hope we can use fairly robust eligibility requirements, like three years of occupancy here in San Rafael, perhaps a resume submitted, no criminal record. I think that's consistent with many other cities, and I'd like to see that level of skill, or at least residency, used in choosing members of the planning commission, particularly when we're talking about projects that have such long lives and impact people day to day. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give it just a few more minutes.
Second.
I see no further public comment.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk. I'll close the public comment, and I will note that we did receive a letter as well that was given to all of the council, as well as myself from the Hillside Neighbors and Ms. Victoria DeWitt. So that has also been received as part of the input. So the questions that I had heard, and we can go through them, the first, maybe I'll just go through them, we can, one by one, the sufficient pool of candidates, which I know you're going to answer, but I have to jump in. We have had amazing number of candidates, so I think actually there was some misinformation there. We, it's been unbelievable. I don't think we've had any, anywhere we haven't had sufficient, and when we haven't, if you can confirm this, we leave it open longer, but if you could speak to the pool of candidates and then, and the suggestions that Ms. Likeover had suggested to you.
Yeah, absolutely. We've, we have, we definitely get a good amount of applications often. We, when I first started working in the city clerk's office, we would maybe get one or two applications each time there was a vacancy, and then, once we started utilizing social media and Nextdoor and Facebook and Instagram, Snapshot, we've really, we've really been able to get anywhere from, too many. I mean, from 12 to 18, sometimes 20 I've seen. So we definitely have a good amount of applicants that are, or applications that we receive in each round. Some of the recommended, the recommendations, I had a conversation with Amy, and she had sent me some, there are mass notifications, so similar to how we let folks know that there's a vacancy, just being more detailed about what exactly the role and the scope is of the board or commission, which I thought was great. And I had also asked if Amy could send me any other ones that she sees coming into. Ideally, though, I would like to have, I'd like to create that content in advance, and for each board and commission, so if there's an expired term that comes up, I already have that content ready to push out. And then also, I want to make sure that I'm not creating any sort of email fatigue, so it, they were long, so I would want to make sure that I, I want to make them a little bit more concise, be able to change them up, make them a little bit more digestible for our, our viewers. And that was, but I really did, they were great. They were great blogs that went out. I'd like to implement them, it just might take a little bit more time.
Yeah, and to that, to follow, can't people sign up to receive a newsletter from your office, so if they want to always be on top of any openings, they can sign up online?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, definitely, and that's the link that I included in my presentation. Once again, www.cityofsanrefel.org/boards-commissions. So yeah, you can absolutely subscribe to hear about vacancies that are coming up. And we did use to use more content when we were putting out on Nextdoor, but it's just interesting, the more you put out to Nextdoor, the less applications you receive. So it's possible there was a misunderstanding, because we were receiving less than we were when we first hit Nextdoor, but we're still receiving a really good amount. There's a steady flow. I'm not concerned about the number of applications we're receiving, but I do think a lot of that has to do with the same content being pushed out consistently. They see the image, they're used to the image, and then they just move on. So we kind of have to keep adapting and being flexible with what we're putting out to make them, make the people of San Rafael stay interested. stay interested.
Yeah, we like that. There were several questions around the Planning Commission. Why we, why the discussion of having district representative? And there was a conversation about eligibility requirements. And again, there was some misinformation. Resumes are included as part of when people have them. But if you could speak to that, so was district eligibility and residency were the three that I heard?
Yeah. So why districts? I kind of outlined what our current district, or what our current Planning Commission makeup is. And as you saw, there's no one in District One at all being represented. And the recommendation really would be similar to the City Council where you might be a district representative, you might be elected to that district, but ultimately, you care about the entire city of San Rafael. And that would be the same expectation moving forward with our, with our Planning Commissioner as well. As far as eligibility requirements, the eligibility requirement is that you reside in San Rafael. Some of the comments that we've had are that they would like to have there be, living here for a longer period of time before they're eligible. And ultimately, that's the City Council's decision if, when someone applies and they reside in the city limits. And you have, you know, seven or eight members that you're interviewing, and there's one person that's been here for one year, and and you decide that ultimately they're a little bit too green in San Rafael to be appointed. That's where, you have the authority to not appoint them at that time and hope that they come back at a future date or reach out to them. As I know, Mayor Kate, you do often with folks who interview for our boards and commissions. That was related to residency and eligibility. I know that in the letter, there was comments about voter registration, and I just wanted to kind of speak to just the equity point of that and just not being able to have, if you're not a citizen of San Rafael, if you're not a citizen of the United States, you wouldn't then be eligible to serve on a Planning Commission or any of our boards or commissions for that matter. And also, not everyone is, is registered to vote. And so they should still be able to serve, and anyone who resides in San Rafael should be able to serve and volunteer on our boards and commissions. My recommendation would, would be to remain, to remain as is.
Yes, very wide net. And then the last, we had two callers who are on the B-PAC or participate in those meetings, wanting the conversation to go back to the B-PAC. Let me see, whatever, and, and keeping it seven people and handling special projects, which I think that we would always handle special projects, you know, working with the Director Guerin, but maybe you could speak to that. I don't know if Lauren or anyone else.
Yeah, we have Lauren Davini here also as well, if she wants to, she's more than welcome to. But we had discussed with Lauren Davini and Raffat about moving the membership from seven to five. As I mentioned earlier, it's just really to make it a little bit, what has, there's a good amount of voices in five members, it improves the efficiency, and then also is able to make it a little bit more manageable of a, of a group. But go right ahead, Lauren.
Yeah.
Hi, Mayor, Lauren Davini, Senior Traffic Engineer. The timing was a little bit poor with when I had to prepare my B-PAC agenda. So it just, we had a really packed B-PAC agenda with some other urgent items. So we just didn't make it to agendizing this topic that Lindsay presented on. We're happy to bring it to our next meeting if that's possible. And then we also informed the Chair and the Vice Chair by email on Friday with the agenda item that Lindsay just presented on.
And can we also confirm, I think for people listening, that these meetings are open to any member of the public. So we're actually just talking about who are the, at the end of the day, who is voting on the item, but anyone can show up and give input, right, regardless of whether you're officially on it or not?
Absolutely.
Okay. She's nodding her head for people that might be listening and not watching. She's nodding her head, yes. And then any special project. So there was a comment about, oh, she's walking away, wait, come back. If, if there is, if there is a special project, and, and so Kate referred to what was done back in 2015, which was a big lift, how we would handle that, we could think, I'm thinking we would think of a way to handle if we had a special project that required a lot of volunteerism around B-PAC, but I just wonder what you were thinking when you heard that comment.
Kate's right in that, or sorry, Member Powers with the B-PAC was correct. We've done a lot of work with ad hoc committees. We can, we'll still be able to do that with a five-member committee. We can have special meetings. As far as special projects, I wasn't around in 2015, so I'm not quite sure what
Okay.
she's referring to. But with any special project, there's extended public outreach and opportunity for, for public comment, and it wouldn't just be happening in the B-PAC meetings.
Okay, thank you. I think those were all, I'm sorry, never let you, never let you walk away. So those are the questions I had. And what I'll do is ask my comments and any additional questions from my colleagues. And also with the Vice Mayor. Any additional questions and comments at the same time, please?
Just in terms of comments, I think to the Clerk's comment about expanding the net, I think is very, very important. And I think the role of us in the interview process is to get to understanding of the qualifications or eligibility, you know, whatever it is, it comes through those interviews. Participated in a number of those interviews now, and I find it, that conversation is, is very valuable to understand people coming forward. I do think it's important that the, the size of a man, to have the size of our commissions and our committees to be manageable, whether it's five or seven, I'll go with the recommendation of what staff is suggesting in terms of those discussions. I think that ad hoc committees, I do see there's an opportunity to bring in even non-voting members from the community to participate. And, and so I think that that's also something that we can always consider and should have the door open to be able to do that. So other members of the community could participate.
Excellent comments. Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I love this stuff. This is so great. This, this is what, no, this is, no, that's, that's why we love you. This is what good government looks like. This is bringing, bringing, taking the initiative to bring forward a proposal that makes things more consistent, more orderly, that we can have one set of rules that applies to everyone, and it's not this amalgamation of, you know, of, of rules. This is how we make things function more efficiently. And to have the foresight to think about this and to go through this thoroughly and in painstaking attention to detail, this is fantastic. I'm so, so glad to hear this, to see this, just an example of our great staff that we have that just keeps bringing these things forward. As some of you know, I've had the opportunity to interact with some other agencies of government that I have not been as satisfied with. So it is just a delight to have this brought forward tonight. And when the time is right, I'd be delighted to make a motion to approve it as presented.
When we get there, there'll be lots of motions, because they're all separate.
Oh, yeah, there was.
So yes, yes, we'll take turns. Councilmember Yorin Scolati?
Nice, the enthusiasm from Councilmember Bushy. I think this is wonderful. I'm like excited and also seeing, you know, that we can start looking for more people in District One, so we can have more representation. So thank you, it's, it's very well done. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I would echo the sentiment of bringing consistency to our BCCs, I'm sorry, Boards, Commissions and Committees. I understand the reason for the Planning Commission being an exception because it is a body that actually does make decisions more than just advisory, so that makes sense. You know, I would just acknowledge that it does seem that folks from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee were taken by surprising. That's regrettable, obviously. What Lauren had shared was that they're trying to fit in too many things. I do think that the committee can adapt to this, and I appreciated the problem solving suggested by the Vice Mayor as far as encouraging public participation in the ad hoc processing. That's, that's a great suggestion to make sure that all the work that can and will be done in the future can be accomplished. And I also lean into the idea that a lot of the suggestions around requirements, minimum requirements to, to join a commission or another one of these bodies is examined through the interview process. I think that the judgment of council is, is, is important to apply. So I appreciate all the comments tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you had another?
I just had a follow-on question in terms of, are the committees and commissions also going to continue to be hybrid? Yeah.
I'm muted. As of right now, everyone is still virtual. City Council is, is the only hybrid. The, the goal is eventually to move to a hybrid model for our boards and commissions as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just close out the comments. A huge amount of work, and you referred to that as you set up your staff report over the years. And thank you to all the city staff and department heads who waited on this. Thomas Wong helped with this in the very beginning as we did surveys, and we surveyed people that were on the boards and commissions, and we surveyed the staff, because at the end of the day, these, these are all about supporting the city work. And I know one of the callers talked about, use the word political will, which was an advocacy term. These are actually to advise the city on the work we're doing. Advocacy can happen, we always appreciate that, but that's not what these committees are for. These are to really support the work, to have the sounding boards, to get the input in an ongoing basis. So I really am appreciative to all the people that have been serving on these and to the staff for providing that input. I agree with Mary Beth, we need to have the consistency. I'm excited about that, too. And when you say Wild, Wild West, it just makes me laugh, because it really was. And it wasn't so much it was Wild, Wild West, it was more, it was an organic process that kind of grew over time, and you wrestled it all back into where it should be. We didn't belabor the point, but on the liaison point, and, and I will follow up on Councilmember Hill said about surprising the B-PAC. I might be the liaison, I'm not sure who the liaison is, but I think part of that is us figuring out up here, as we've moved to districts, what is the interface with each of these boards and commissions? And there aren't excuses to be made, but it's really the reality of having gone in the pandemic and everything else, and having, you know, a new council. So we will get better at that. I love the mentoring aspect that you mentioned. I think that's, we would all love to do that. So that will be something that we will continue to flesh out more. We're just not there, and we appreciate the community for understanding how we showed up as humans in this moment, and that part wasn't all thought through yet. And then finally, on the compensation, 100% agree with Councilmember Yorin Scolati, there is an equity component. The city, excuse me, the county we're in right now is looking at this across all their boards and commissions. So we're kind of thinking is, let's, they have a whole department that can work on this. So we're going to see what they're coming out with, and then we'll probably bring something like that back here to see if it's just compensation for the, the decision-making body or for the Planning Commission or all of them. So stay tuned. 100%. We're not going to rush that, though, because this was the first step, and we would love to build off of what the county is doing. So with that, again, thank you to the City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk. Huge amount of work, and we all love things when they're a little bit more consistent and straightforward. So with that, and Mary Beth thought, or Councilmember Bushy thought she had one motion. We'll all take turns, or you all will take turns. So
I can take the first one?
Get started, yeah.
I move that we adopt a resolution amending the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee bylaws.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Deputy City Clerk.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yorin Scolati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Next item? Councilmember Micah, why don't you go after it?
I make a motion to pass to print an ordinance of the City of San Rafael amending title 2.16.020 through 2.16.023 of the San Rafael Municipal Code related to the Park and Recreation Commission.
There's a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Deputy City Clerk.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yorin Scolati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
That motion carries five zero. Ascend down here. He's ready. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
All right. Like to adopt a resolution amending the Park and Recreation Commission bylaws.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yorin Scolati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Councilmember Hill? Make a motion? Let's put you on the spot.
As a reminder, Councilmember Hill, this is the one with, with amendments as staffs requested.
Yes. I move that we adopt a resolution amending the Park and Recreation.
Wait, no, next one down.
Sorry, apologies. I move that we pass to print an ordinance of the City of San Rafael amending sections 2.16.040 through 2.16.110 of the San Rafael Municipal Code related to the Planning Commission, including adjustments made by the staff.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yorin Scolati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Councilmember Bushy?
Yep, bring it home. I move that we adopt a resolution amending the Planning Commission bylaws.
I'll second. They're moving second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yorin Scolati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Again, thank you, City Clerk's Office, for bringing this to us. I know it's been a lot, some of you worked on for years, and it's nice to have all of these pass, so thank you. There are no San Rafael Successor Agency items. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.